Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the Planning Commission of Dana Point. It says Thursday, June 11th, but I don't think it's Thursday. June 11th. And I'd like to invite Matt from Public Works to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Please let the record show that all planning commissioners are present.
Thank you. First item, Item A, is the approval of last meeting's minutes. Do we have any discussion on that? Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes. Approve them.
I second it.
Okay. Thank you. I will be abstaining because I wasn't here last meeting. That item passes 4-0 with one abstention by me. Public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or on an agenda item is asked to complete the request-to-speak form available at the door or from our Madam Secretary. The completed form is to be submitted to the Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of fifteen minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Do we have any speaker slips?
No.
Thank you. Consent calendar, we have no items on our consent calendar. Moving on to our public hearing. Coastal development permit CDP 16-005 to demolish an existing restaurant and construct a new hundred-room hotel, resort hotel, with a restaurant, cafe, spa, and associated parking. Conditional use permit CUP 18-0008 for alternatives to the design of off-street parking regulations and for architectural features to exceed the district building height limit. And site development permit SDP 18-0016 for walls to exceed the 3.5-foot height limit within setbacks adjoining public streets with tentative track map TTM 18164 to consolidate the underlying legal lots at 34344 Green Lantern. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, I would like to thank the committee for their participation. You might be able to work out on development in the area. And some of the concerns and issues were raised as discussed. And this particular project is in isolation, you will be seeing. And this has been in our queue for over a few years. There's been a lot of analysis in time that has gone into the project. And Chris Thompson is the principal planner and will be giving the staff report. I did want to take the opportunity to thank the applicant specifically in regard to the design. He spent a lot, a lot of time, you would find, to make the aesthetics, the design, understanding that that leaves the most visual impact of the project. And that was very sort of rapid. It was a little frustrating on our end because it did take quite some time. But we will present the project to you right now.
Thank you, Ursula. Chairman Cannon, members of the Planning Commission, good evening. As you can see, the site is the existing Cannon Restaurant. It was built in 1972 on this forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine-square-foot lot, three stories, approximately ten thousand four hundred square feet in area. The site is surrounded to the east by the Blue Laff and Inn, right next door, as you can see in this photo. To the west is the Hilltop Park, an existing multifamily residential development. To the north across Santa Clara is a commercial retail center, and to the south is a county all-of-the-maintained bluffed, coastal bluffs. Some existing site photos are showing the existing conditions on the site, the existing restaurant, a view from the corner of Santa Clara and Green Lantern, shot with the Green Lantern frontage, and a view added across the main entry, or the only which are going from Santa Clara up to the restaurant. This particular property is located in the coastal zone within the jurisdiction of the Dana Point Specific Plan, local coastal program. And that is the active local coastal program for all the sites currently above the harbor. As you can see with a map here, it is within the coastal commercial commissions' appeal jurisdiction. So any actions that are taken tonight could be appealed once they've gone through the local process to the California Coastal Commission. As I said, the property is located in the Dana Point Specific Plan. Within that zoning, within that document, the property is Zonal Coastal Commercial District. The table here identifies the development standards that are germane to properties with this designation. As you kind of go through them, you can see there's some interesting development standards that we don't see a lot over here with regard to site size, site width, number of stories, site coverage. None of those things are covered in the district regulations for the CVC. The proposed there is on the right to kind of give you guys, the commission and the public, an idea of what is being proposed. Of course, there are setbacks, twenty, ten, and ten. Twenty for the front side is ten, and then the rear, or in this case, the bluff side is twenty-five, and that's determined by the city through the geotechnical analysis that we've undergone. Just to kind of add to what Ursula said, when she says more than two years, the project started probably four years ago, when the applicant came in and made inquiries to us with the unusual condition of the bluff below it where they had to repair. The county maintains and monitors. Staff was at a bit of a conundrum on how we were going to find, you know, where the bluff edge was, because there were some man-made facilities there certainly when the property was developed. Prior to the Coastal Act, there was some man-made alteration of the coastal bluff, so we had those factors to contend with. Staff engaged the Coastal Commission, and the Coastal Commission, state officials just came out and met with us, and we determined that the bluff edge pretty much ran right at the edge of the existing improvements. So as you, as you go from the east side of the property line and route around to the south to the lower portion, all those improvements there kind of define bluff edges in this case. So based on that and based on the studies we got, the twenty-five-foot bluff edge setback was appropriate for the site. Now, relative to the Dana Point Specific Plan, it's a pretty all-encompassing document, but there are provisions that it doesn't address, such as parking, projections, and the height, decks, and balconies, somewhat similar to our Town Center Plan that doesn't address everything. We defer to our zoning code. In the case of the Dana Point Specific Plan, the Orange County zoning code is auxiliary to the Dana Point Specific Plan, so, such as parking and projections and setbacks and things of that nature. We have to go to the Orange County zoning code. And we go to the version that was in place when the city incorporated, because obviously the county has made changes to the zoning code since the city incorporated, but they didn't go through that process, vetting of it, so we can use what was in place when the city incorporated. Just gonna go through and talk a little bit about the proposed structure. We're gonna go kind of through level by level. So five levels. There's a couple of half-levels of parking areas that are subterranean. This table, which was taken from the staff report, chronicles the level. We'll go through each one pretty quickly. As you can see, this is the lowest level, the lowest parking level, there's sixteen stalls below. The interesting thing that I wanted to point out on this particular side is the red line denotes the twenty-five-foot coastal bluff edge setback. I've also noted, I've also noted the, in blue, that is the approximate location of the ten-foot bluff trail dedication that is required for the Dana Point Specific Plan, and that the applicant has shown on their plan. So that's, that's the approximate location. The actual location will be sorted out in the condition of approval. There's a legal description that goes with that. The offer is made to the city, and the city has a certain timeline to accept the offer. Also wanted to note that over, can't see it very well right over here, but there's an outline here that kind of defines the areas of improvement of the bluff when it had a failure back in the eighties. As I mentioned, the county of Orange maintains and monitors, but does not repair, part of which runs under the southern tip of the property down in this area. Staff had reached out to the county of Orange, the Parks Department, or the particular branch of the county government that's in charge of that. We forwarded them the plans and the geotechnical reports, and they have asked that we include a condition of approval that they review engineered drawings prior to the decision to lay in progress. So there is a condition there relative to that. The county also provided the applicant and the city with some of the monitoring and the things that happened since the bluff repairs were completed in the mid-eighties. Also want to point out on this particular slide, just talk quickly about drainage. Similar to other portions of our city where we have coastal bluffs, we don't allow drainage to go over the bluff edge in this particular design. They're proposing a couple of subpumps on the lower edge near the bluff, because it's at a lower elevation. And they're proposing a rain water harvesting system, it's a fully self-sustained system, so stormwater that's pumped into those pumps would be pumped up into a large rainwater harvesting tank, twenty-three thousand gallons. Stormwater from other portions of the lot would also be pumped there. In the case of, you have a storm that's over the design threshold, it would divert through the drainage that's on the panhandle portion out to the land, to existing storm drain facilities that go down through the harbor. The civil project, civil engineer has done preliminary calculations, hydrology, and is more than adequate to handle anything that they would be contributing to the building. So in the case of fifty-year or whatever each storm event, it would, it would blow. I'll go on to parking level two. This is also the ground level of the facility. As you can see, this particular level is completely subterranean for the parking. These are the first level of guest facilities. They also have a restaurant in this area with some outdoor dining in the black shaded area. There's also a cafe down off of this lower area. The elevations aren't exactly the same, but it's also accessed off of that area. And then there's sixty parking stalls in that level of the parking structure. This is the second level of the hotel. Again, we have some rooms facing coastal bluff. Sixteen guest rooms total. On level P2 here, this is the main entry off of Santa Clara. There's a total of forty-six parking stalls. This section also, excuse me, this parking level also provides, there's two loading stalls in this area, and also the waste and recycling facilities are located in this area off the main entry into these lower parking levels. With regard to some of the parking levels, one of the requests was a CUP to bury from the graves inside the parking levels and across the parking stalls. So that's part of what they have requested, for those slopes to be a little higher than what's allowed for their particular use. Public Works in Engineering has reviewed that and deemed it safe and acceptable, and there's a recommendation of approval for that in the draft draft proposal. Moving on, there's another half-level of parking P3, again, which is fully subterranean, total of eighteen stalls, and that's the highest level of the lower four parking levels. Moving up to the hotel entry level, or third level, this is where the main lobby is for the hotel. This is also P4 parking level, where they have four, or twenty-five parking stalls. This is one, this is access off of Green Lantern, and there's one way in at this point and one way out. There's a hotel with twenty-five guest rooms, and the spa that was mentioned is also located on this level. Hotel fourth level is a series of, again, guest rooms, twenty-nine total, overlooking Green Lantern, and then to the back of the property, facing east, with a few more that will have up on this level looking over the lot of, and then the fifth level with nineteen guest rooms. This is the proposed roof plan. Before we kind of go too much farther in here, I want to explain a couple of things. The shaded gray areas on this particular plan denote the areas, as mentioned, there are allowable projections above the height limit that Orange County zoning code allows. It's a vertical distance of ten feet above the height limit. These areas shaded in gray are those portions of the roof, of the architectural feature, these pitched roof elements that project above the thirty-five-foot height limit for the site. I did want to note that also, as mentioned in the staff report, these are, they're not just roofs, they are architectural features, providing, screening for the mechanical equipment that is housed under all of these. I think all of those pitched roof elements were housed, housed the HVAC equipment for the structures. There's not a lot of back-to-house space, a lot of extra space in the levels of the parking garage to accommodate that, and ventilation would be necessary, so they've decided to house it up here and extract out all the equipment. And these are the projected areas. The roof also features a vegetated roof. The green areas are part of that rain harvesting system, self-compensating system that I mentioned. All the rainwater that would be caught in there would be diverted to the, the tank, the twenty-three-thousand gallon tank. It would also, that tank would also serve as irrigation for the vegetated roofs, a self-sustaining system, and if they want to get enough water, they can pull water from the rain harvesting tank underneath and provide water for the vegetated roofs. The county zoning code has a different way to measure building height than our zoning code. It's, I'll go on to a lot of detail, but essentially it creates an envelope by which the building cannot penetrate that envelope. And as is included in both the civil drawings and the architectural drawings, there are a series of building height sections that cut through the building in various, I highlighted a few of these here to show them, and show portions where it actually projects. Now, these particular sections don't have exactly where the highest peaks are, so they're just a representation of where that particular section, but in accordance, or as illustrated on the roof plan, it tells you by how much each particular roof element, roof, pitch roof element, projects above the height limit. If the maximum one is a little five feet, that would be possible, then the county would have, or the county would allow. These are a few sections. There's a legend here that shows you where those sections are cut through under proposed building. This particular section B has some projections above that height limit. Again, it's not right that the, where the section is taken, so some of those peaks are in the foreground or in the background. There's a couple more sections, longitudinal section J that goes through the entire building to a couple, there's an area here where it's projecting above the height limit. This section C shows the height envelope. It also has, I wanted to point this one out because it shows the profile of the existing restaurant. It's hard to see, kind of for the public, of the cans showing over in this area of the lot, the, not only will the building be pulled back away from that southern property line, it originally had a variance to go that close, but it'll also be a little shorter than what it was there, so some of the mass that there now will be lost within the proposed. Moving on to the off-street parking. Again, parking is as required by the Orange County zoning code for motels and hotels. It's one stall for each guest unit plus additional parking for accessory uses. And the spa, as noted here, the two restaurants are a total parking requirement of a hundred and thirty-six parking stalls. They have a proposed parking supply of a hundred and sixty-five parking stalls, so they're plus twenty-nine on the code requirement. So as, if you read through there, there's some, there's some conditions on the project to allow at least six of these stalls, these extra stalls, to be used for visitor purposes to park on the site and then access the bluff top trail if they so chose. The visitor-serving facilities that the Dana Point Specific Plan talks about, in fact, the motels, hotels, and restaurants are all visitor-serving facilities, commercial uses that are encouraged in the Dana Point Specific Plan. We also have a couple of conditions that we added to make sure that the parking stalls are used, as parking, so that, you know, storage on those lower levels of, you know, hotel functions. You ran into that issue with some of the other hotels in town, and we wanted to condition it that way, so there's a couple of other conditions relative to storage. And then moving on, I want to talk a little bit about the architecture. These are some elevation renderings of the proposed hotel. Just kind of go through each of those, and here's some other renderings. This one in the upper left is from the hilltop, access to the hilltop trail, looking down at the proposed finished building. This one here to the right is heading north on Green Lantern. The one on the bottom left is heading west up Santa Clara as you would approach the entry off of Santa Clara to the lower parking levels. Same view, there's one here at the corner of Green Lantern and Santa Clara, looking out over the ocean harbor in the background. And here's some close-ups, again, a closer version of the Santa Clara and Green Lantern corner shot, and a closer version showing some of the detailing of the architecture. The applicant had a pretty sturdy material board. As I said, there's a, there's a good example of the proposed pitch roof elements. It's going to be a standing seam roof that will be treated with some acids, some other cocktails, to provide it with a fatina, a natural copper LeBron fatina look. Other portions of the hotel, the upper portions around the rooms would feature stucco, and the lower portions appear to be the foundation elements, they have stone around the perimeter walls. These column features are actually non-structural elements that will have the same stone finish. They project a little bit into the required setbacks that provided those some relief to some earlier versions of the architectural renderings that we were provided. There are wood railings, balcony railings with some iron inserts and lovers to cover some of the parking areas, you can see in this particular area. It's not really reminiscent of any particular style, but it's a little bit of information in there in the staff reports, knowing and speaking with the architect over the last four years, a little, little hints of some of the Hawaiian, the Hawaiian architecture that he's familiar with, and his practice, harvest facility there. So there's some hints of that, and I wouldn't say it's fully Hawaiian architecture, but there's some hints of it. This is just to piggyback on the height projections, the darker areas here show those portions of the structure where the pitch roof elements project above the height limit and the amount by which they project over. In, in summing, summing up, that includes that portion of the project. The tentative map is required. When staff kept the application and started looking at the title of the words and the legal description, there were a lot of underlying lots there, some of them numbered, some of them lettered, going through our subdivision ordinance and the building code that was clear to us that they needed to consolidate, to dissolve all those lots to create the bigger lots. So because of the lot line adjustment, it only allows for four fewer parcels, and a lot merger only allows two lots under our subdivision ordinance, subdivision code, tentative map, tri-temple, the default mechanism to clear up all these underlying lots. So that's part of the, what you're considering here tonight, but it's just to make the larger lots of the proposed development to be constructed without going across property lines or being constructed on a ladder lot, which is not allowed by subdivision code. To sum up, the entitlements, again, the CUP is being requested, the proposed project with the Dana Point Specific Plan, the local coastal program, development standards, as I mentioned, motel, restaurant uses, our visitor-serving facilities, providing the requisite access through the bluff top trail dedication. The CUP is required to, for revisions to the design of the parking structure, stall and aisle slopes, as well as to project above the district height limit. An SDP is required. We have to mention that there is a wall that is adjacent to the Blue Lantern Inn, right near the entry, it's in the front yard, it says like the first twenty feet, and it's over the three-and-a-half foot limit. There is a five-foot change in grade there, so additional wall height is necessary to combat that change of grade and to provide showing for the subterranean arc level below that area. And so they're requesting the site development permits to allow that. And then lastly, the tentative tri-temple is necessary, as I just mentioned, to consolidate all the underlying, the lots. The project team is here, Joel Encor is the project architect, is a geotechnical consultant here as well, he's here to answer any questions, here to answer any questions, usual, may have, and that will conclude my...
Before, you can put this back before. There are, there's a lot of information that we've given, and sometimes we even read this, and I would like to highlight and clarify a few items, but one, doing that perfectly, are you able to pull up the rendering version that showed the outline of the existing Cannon Building in red, transposed onto one of the, while you're looking for that, and I am going to just go over a few items. One, the bluff edge that was discussed, I just want to talk a little bit more about the meeting with Coastal Commission's geologists who did actually physically come to the site, was very aware of the past slope failure and the mechanism that was used to prevent that, and basically said, this is the bluff edge, and this manmade facility makes the bluff edge actually more stable than it was without it, and so the engineering are related to that. And then the city, through geotechnical analysis, which the applicant had to retain, provide, and then our geotechnical engineer, geologist review... And then our geotechnical engineer, geologist review, um, along with some erosion reports to establish what is the best setback. And so the twenty-five feet was not an arbitrary number, it was based on his analysis. Um, I just wanted to fully emphasize that on the parking, it is fully parked without any shared parking. And that is unique, um, in that almost all the other hotels in town have used some element of shared parking where they said, people staying at this hotel are going to come and visit this restaurant and so we can share some parking. This project has actually fully parked the rooms as well as the restaurant without any sharing and has a surplus of twenty-nine parking spaces. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Um, in terms of traffic, and I'm not sure if there's other staff members that are going to come up and, and speak or not, but, uh, there was traffic analysis, it was done on there, some of that information was shared at the workshop. Um, but this project does not make the traffic situation any worse. It does not end, uh, with, uh, additional trips than what the current restaurant does. So it's not that intuitive, but restaurants actually are one of the highest generators of traffic. They have a high turnover. And so this hotel, the square footage of the restaurant has drastically decreased from what exists today. Um, and the hotel is actually fairly passive use from a traffic standpoint. So even though there is a restaurant and a cafe and spa and a hundred rooms, the traffic impact is equal to the existing Cannon's restaurant today based on analysis that was been updated. Um, I thought it might be a little bit confusing when we talked about fourth and fifth stories. That was starting from low grade as a first story. I just wanted to make sure everyone's clear that this is a three-story structure from what you see. So from a grade, it does not exceed three stories. Um, and then the pitched roofs are truly architectural because this building actually could get away as a flat roof. There's no need for these, these are the sort of decorative hats that are being put on top of the building to add visual interest and to hide mechanical equipment. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And as Kurt mentioned, the zoning code, um, in this case actually allows you this ten-foot projection. And at most, this project does five feet and there's three specified areas that are shared. Um, and so you had that particular, oh, the rendering is, uh, and what I just wanted to show, I know it's not the easiest to see here, but that red outline there is the existing Cannon's restaurant as it's built today. And with the redevelopment of this site, it actually opens up, um, some views from that public access point right there, which is the trailhead, um, and opens up some views of the harbor from what's current today. So that was the last point that I wanted to make. And then we will turn it over to the commission for, uh, any further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ursula, you mentioned that maybe other staff had things they wanted to address. Do they, or?
I guess, it's in response to questions. So we do have our own, um, engineering staff here, um, so if there are any questions out in the met, I'll be able to answer those.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for the thorough staff report, Kurt and Ursula. Um, do we, what questions do we have for staff as a commission? Commissioner Donner?
Uh, Kurt, uh, does the city have any overall projected maximum number of hotel rooms for Dana Point?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Um, under the, in the write-up, it said affordable rental, uh, the chart that we put together says how much affordable, um, properties are available in Dana Point and some concern about the coastal commission that there be enough affordable, uh, hotel rooms or properties. And I, I don't know how many, um, licensed, uh, short-term rentals we have in Dana Point, but, uh, I didn't see that was included. That is a, a way that people could occupy property in Dana Point without being a hotel room. And also Airbnb, I see a lot of advertisements in, in Dana Point for, um, for lower-cost accommodations because this doesn't look like a lower-cost accommodation. Um, and the projected traffic impact was a question, I guess, that now is, um, is not a, is not an issue. And, um, would you, would you explain the runoff calculations of how that's improved? I, the chart wasn't very clear.
Is that drainage runoff or?
Yeah, there was a, there was a chart on, on what the impact of, of the, um, it was on one of the drawings here. Uh, let's see, the number on the page is six of ten. Hydraulic, uh, the hydrology and hydraulic calculations. And it says runoff calculator and it looks, um,
I'm going to refer to art engineers.
Okay.
Did you have a specific question or?
Well, what I was trying to figure out, it shows a minus, it looks like it's supposed to be positive that the, this, this, uh, system, if you look at the existing and the projected, the square footage is the same and then it drops down to, uh, the next set of numbers, the thirty-eight thousand versus twenty-two minus thirty-eight percent. Is that a, is that a, the increase benefit of this system?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
So the, the, the current proposed system decreases the amount of runoff by thirty-eight percent.
That's all my question, just to make sure I understood that, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Opel?
Kurt, I just have a couple of questions. One has to do with the request for the revised grades for the parking. Does that impact any of the handicap stalls or path of travel? Or is that in a separate area than where this request is for?
That is in a separate area, the accessible stalls are on level P four and they have to meet the, uh, the, the county zoning board for, um, for the building code, so it doesn't impact those, they have to meet those, there's no relief for those particular areas.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that where this request was, there were no handicap stalls that would be impacted. Um, and then on the conditions of approval, it looks like number thirty-five and forty-two may be the same with respect to the hall route. I didn't know if they were for two different times or if it was just a repeat.
No, that, that, it, that looks like it's duplicative, so one of those should be.
Okay, and then my only other item is on condition of approval forty-one, you actually have deliveries before seven AM. Although work can't start, you requested deliveries prior to seven AM between nine and four or between six and eight. I'm just questioning the before seven AM.
Um, those, that particular conditions, I know there's another condition, um, condition nine, um, that is relative to after issuance of certificate of occupancy. This other one, I believe, is for construction-related deliveries. I think all the boards can confirm, so that's, that's the newest difference between that, but.
Though, yeah, because the issue with construction-related deliveries is forklifts, backup alarms, it gets kind of loud and I'm just concerned about that, the timing for that, that, only that condition. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nelson, do you have any questions?
I got a whole bunch of questions, sorry. How you doing tonight? My mic's your downright, uh, so I'll project, uh, so relative to, we talked a little bit about the traffic, so how big is the existing restaurant? Approximately ten thousand? On the CUP for the parking, of this, um, two percent rate issue? Is that cross-slope or is that where, where the, essentially the, the CUP applies or is it?
Yeah, I, it, it is cross-slope for the stalls. Um, there's an exhibit that's in the county parking code that frankly isn't, uh, great, but it's pretty clear for the cross-slope, it is a two percent maximum for, uh, that retail commercial type use. Um, the aisle, it says it's a two percent maximum, you know, as you back into that parking aisle. So you can only have a two percent max, you know, run into the parking aisle. Um, it's not that clear on the, on the graphic, but the text, if you read the text of what that says, then yes, the maximum of two percent across the parking stall, the aisles leading into the parking stalls.
So you're, so that rate actually change direction?
Slightly.
Or the stall, does that change direction?
Slightly.
What is the typical driveway rate requirement about that? Not cross-slope, but driveway.
Commercial? Um, for the parking, I'm not sure in our, our general parking code exactly what that would be. I know that for all other uses other than retail, commercial and the county code, it allows up to five percent. Um, so that could be, could be a, um, if it was just a straight restaurant, you could have a five percent slope on the aisle.
Do we have our own code in place to, so, so, why?
Yes. Um, I'd have to refer to the zoning codes and pull that up, but I don't have that right, it's a different one.
Talking a little bit about that block top trail dedication, how's that? Is that something that would actually connect now or is it future potential connection?
Okay, so the Blue Lantern Inn, which was approved around, I'll say nineteen ninety, just based on the records that I have. Um, they, they made the dedication and the city up and accepted it straight away. So there's part of the trail there, uh, that could be accessed from Blue Lantern. Uh, of course, this particular lot has some extreme topography stairways at the southern end. Um, and there is no property, the property that fall, that lies between this property and the next, um, multifamily residential. The city controls that trash facility or it's the county, county slope. So there's really no, um, straight connection to another property, so they would have to go down and then access it from another point. Either one of the, there's a couple of proposed hotels that someone already knows, they'll have to make the same dedication. They'll have to make that, um, lateral, you know, coming down the side. So this would just, this would daylight up the Green Lantern and then open into, um, I know there's no sidewalk there now, but at some point, the city is not, they're making improvement on Green Lantern that we spoke about at the, uh, at the workshop. Um, and it would make that connection there.
And if I can just interject, that is a good point that we failed to mention that, um, part of that plan that was shown at the workshop in terms of there were certain sidewalk improvements along the main or, but those that are adjacent to this property or surrounds properties on Santa Clara, and, 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 um, the applicant would be putting those sidewalk improvements in there and would be then part of that plan done. And in the future, when those sidewalk improvements are done, there will be connection from this trail up to the sidewalk and then back to the dump to other trails. Uh, but through this, some of the topography, it will be perfectly possible in that area, um, just the right that you see on your screen to get a block top trail right, right in there. But there will be ways through, um, construction trails and sidewalk to make connection as well as to the existing trail across the street.
Do you have the existing rate of the parking by applicant passing the parent parking spaces? Whether they apply with this two percent maximum cross?
I don't, I didn't run the calculations, I'm not sure if engineering would do that. So it's, uh, it's pretty steep, sorry. I want, I would say it's probably hardly five percent, frankly.
So on this, I'm actually, I have the areas that are dark injured, it heats that CUP thirty-five foot height limit. And inside there is capital, but I assume there's certain issues, vents, stuff like that. I see if we didn't approve the, the SVP, the CUP, the applicant be able to just opt those roofs and leave that area of, 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 that be holding the sign? Do you, or I want to make sure we get into a discussion about this, if we understand whether the downside risk would be, if we don't have to approve this, if we're going to be certain, uh, as soon as they can create these block tops and there's the air issues.
I think the city provision in Orange County zoning code that would preclude them from doing that. I'm assuming part of having the whole, I don't want to speak for the applicant is to have, you know, some weather protection so they're not preparing, going to, and it's not exposed to the sun. Um, but I, in my review of the Orange County zoning, I didn't see anything that would preclude them from doing that.
So you have a similar rooftop, which I'll, here, hey, so we have all the units that are, you know, and it's the, the street wall, um, we don't see it.
Right.
Okay. So I'm all done here. Um, the SVP, three after wall, I was out there the other day, it looks like there's already some pretty tall canyon wall up against, um, the street there. I'm just curious, how often do we cross this, is it, please, I'm quite a bit, they're, 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 yeah.
Quite frequently, you don't, the planning commission doesn't see a lot of them because they're administrative. So unless it's coming in with a larger entitlement, that, whether it's CUP or some other larger site development permit, uh, all of those are handled administratively through an administrative hearing during the design of the project.
Um, I know there was a discussion about the visitor parking that would be reserved for, uh, visiting, uh, out parking that is certainly allocated on that.
Not at this time, we just conditioned that way, so when, uh, we get the final, you know, structural plans for the parking garage, you'll have to develop those particular areas of, of the corner.
And you have sign, you know. And you have sign, you know?
Yes, I think a condition was for, uh, requirements.
Uh, do you, I mean, out in the, the area where the area of the highs, uh, fifty thousand, uh, can't, you know, the parking lot, this is, you know?
Oh, yeah. Um, this is one of the civil drawings, one of the levels, so a lot of the cuts coming in with the river, that's, that larger rectangle there.
It's often, yes.
Yeah.
Right. And you know the height of the adjacent structure, the adjacent, the height of the gas?
The structure was approved, um, to the thirty-five foot high limit, I believe, and they also received the CUP projected above for architectural features, that's high in height for the tops of those that looks up.
I didn't see, uh, uh, is there a specific condition relative to the way the park and the, that, where he's, uh, grassed on it, uh, that would park within their, uh, they all, maybe.
Yes, um. There is a condition for, um, parking management plan that we include in the plans.
Condition one, if you want. All right, they definitely have.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Thank you, thank you. A couple of different issues. If there develops some conflicts, uh, between what would be the Dana Point Zone zoning code and the Orange County, uh, zoning code, how do those conflicts get resolved in terms of actually moving on with this program, with this process?
In terms of the Dana Point zoning code?
Well, yes, if, cause we're working under, we're working under Dana Point Zone codes and we're working under Orange County government zoning codes.
Right, so the, the Dana Point zoning code is part of the city's local coastal program for certain certified areas in the city, so we leave on our beach, um, the towns that the Landry district, um.
Correct, if I can, it's, um, everywhere except for where the Dana Point specific plan is applicable is the Dana Point zoning code. And.
I understand that.
So we have a certified local coastal program, and that was certified under the county's jurisdiction, which is the Dana Point specific plan and the Orange County zoning code that was in effect at that time. The Dana Point zoning code does not apply to this area at all. We can only use the Dana Point specific plan and the Orange County zoning code that was effective at the time that the local coastal program was certified. So there can't be conflicts because the Dana Point zoning code does not regulate this area.
Okay, well, that was my question, there's not going to be a kind of a conflict between these two competing.
Correct, they, they cover different areas and they can't, yes.
Right, yeah, yeah, understand that, okay. Um, looking at the, the renderings or actually the photographs of the Cannons, Now Cannons Restaurant, um, there's a, seems to be a lot of hardscape there, but, right there on the cliff, uh, and this is an older bluff that this hardscape is on and it's been there since the seventies, I gather. What special considerations need to be taken so that with all the removal of the hardscape, we're not going to lose any of our bluff?
Well, I think, I've talked about during this, down before presentation, I think there's a bit of a, over, where, above the failure, there's, you won't lose anything, you know, it's, the improvements are in place, so, or be some resurfacing, uh, surfaces out there, there would be probably some changes to make, to make, to make the trail and maybe, uh, you know, a stair without, up the stairway, you know, access is up to the ladder on that southern side, section. On the east side, again, there's a lot of, uh, existing hardscape and even though in our normal zoning code, our, our local coastal program, we don't allow that type of hardscape, which would be that much, that close to a full finish, um, it, it does tend to slow down the arrival process. Um, so on the eastern side, it's, it's really kind of on those lower levels of resurfacing, what's there, they haven't specified a particular finish at this time, we'll work that out, maybe we'll do structural plans. But if we would, uh, if we, if there were, if there were, you know, lots of laws over there, um, as, as Ursula mentioned, they, the counties for fifty years, they've had erosion, that's a couple of, uh, where the county characters are, there is some erosion on the eastern side, it'll occur over fifty years, but, uh, all the improvements would be set, go back behind that, that you'd be no risk, uh, to be the, uh, resurfacing, resurfacing or loss of property, but implementation is not.
So i- in essence, the har, the hardscape, when it's either removed and replaced or whatever's going to happen to it, is more of a protect, it, it becomes a protective measure for.
It, it acts that way, with the drainage improvements that are being diverted away from the block, those, you know, further, you know, I'm a, I'm not a geologist, uh, hopefully Brian will agree with me, a project, geologists would agree that it is going to link to the life of that, or it may not be as, as large as, um, forecast. I don't know that, but that's, we don't have.
Okay, um, that's all, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you. Um, regarding the rear trail, and I know we've talked about like rear trails and offer of dedication before, are we going to have an, uh, kind of a Nolan Dolan issue with this trail or offer? Cause that's come up before where it was kind of questioned.
Yes, that was on residential property.
Okay.
And this is commercial, the key difference.
Okay. Um, and for the record, you guys have, or the applicant's done a very thorough geologic investigation and it's been thoroughly reviewed and considered by city staff, is that correct?
Uh, I guess, or so, I've been worried, it started four years ago, we did through, uh, five or six responses and back and forth with, uh, targeted geologists, city geologists, um, trying to, I think we answered, or asked every question that we could, you know, we could relative to the, you know, circumstance of this particular block, there's a lot of , uh, it's been, uh, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you know why the entrance on the Santa Clara side is kind of curved as it comes into the garage?
I'm going to surmise, uh, the, the engineers down there, I think it's to help, it's just making some of the slopes coming out, so that we consider it won't straight down to the aisle.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Chairman?
Yeah, please.
The question, uh, condition eleven talks about the city of.
So, uh, there's an existing, uh, trash enclosure, structure that is, um, just south of the, uh, existing Cannons and on city control property, they use that as, as a trash enclosure for a restaurant. Uh, we've included a condition there, um, and the applicant has agreed to repurpose that as a visitor serving facility, um.
And there's actually the applicant property, so, uh, the doctor, the applicant, yeah, and it's, you have to, you have to get permission on it.
Yeah, so although it, it's not specific as to what it's going to be repurposed or how it's going to be repurposed out of the, uh, for, uh, through that condition, it would be another visitor serving facility that would, uh, be an asset to the project and that actual, that location is, um, identified as a specific plan, a primary, being down the harbor, so it's, you know, that'd be there as well. Where is that, yeah? Um, I'm going to, for, I think, for.
Goes right here in this up and right picture.
Any other questions?
I have one more, sorry. I found it interesting that this lot actually, once they combine all these lots with their track map, their parcel actually goes between the Blue Lantern Inn and the Blue Lantern Inn parking.
It, it, it goes, it goes through there now, that's part of the, right?
Right, but what's in, it's so, but most of their utility connections, I believe there's some in the street of the Blue Lantern, at least for, um, it looks like there's storm water or storm drain.
Well, that's a storm drain, we're, we divert to, some of the other utility connections I know are identified on the civil plans coming up, I believe, Santa Clara or near the intersection of Santa Clara and Blue Lantern.
Right, so for one of the conditions of approval, you have, um, traffic control plans, will that also be pedestrian control plans because you're going to impact that sidewalk through there or people getting from the parking lot to the Blue Lantern Inn? So I want to make sure that that's part of the conditions, that there's a way for them, safe way to get from parking to the facility.
To the inn?
Yes, cause you're going to be, apparent, it looks like there's work that's being done through that.
Right.
Their access, what's a considered a service access?
Yeah, so they would have to account for maintaining the sidewalks so that people park in the Blue Lantern Inn's parking lot.
Right, so the question is, what does, is that encompassed by the required traffic control plan? Cause it just says traffic, it doesn't say pedestrian, so I just want to make sure that...
It typically encompasses pedestrians.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's been thought of. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Okay, with that, we're going to open the public hearing and we'd love to hear from members of the public who wish to speak on this project. It looks like we have some speaker slips. If anybody hasn't filled out a speaker slip and wants to speak on this issue, please see our cherished secretary and she will help you. So with that, uh, and as a reminder, you have a three minute time limit and bells and whistles will start going off as you get close to that. Uh, Kevin Trigg.
I'm Kevin Trigg from the city of San Clemente, I'm a member of GeoFirm and I'm the geologist for the project. So if any of the commissioners have any questions regarding the analysis or the geology for the site, um, I'm here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for making yourself available. Pete Hammer.
Hello, members of the commission. Uh, my name's Pete Hammer. I'm a resident of Dana Point for over twenty-five years. I have a real estate investment counseling, uh, background when I was working for a living. And then with retirement, I was president and CEO of your Dana Point Fifth Marine Regiment Support Group and then moved on to become the commandant of our Marine Corps League. I'm also a lifetime member of our VFW, which meets at Cannons. Uh, concerning the Cannons Green Lantern project, it seems well conceived and is aesthetically pleasing. Uh, it's a very nice addition to, uh, the Dana Point community. I think it'd draw additional tourists to Dana Point and be a benefit to our businesses as well as restaurants here in the city. Uh, the project will also provide the city with additional property taxes, sales taxes and bed use taxes plus permit fees. Um, Cannons, the partners have been very good friends of our Marines, our sailors, families, veterans, and would hope that, uh, you would see fit to approve this project as submitted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. Joe Dunn.
My name is Joe Dunn. I reside at three two four six two Crete Road in Dana Point. I've known and worked with the owners, uh, of the project as well as their architect, Joe Lancor, and I can attest to their commitment to quality. From studying the design of the project, it appears to be, in my opinion, at the head of the class of what is being planned in the city and what is under construction and what has been built. I mean, I think it's a quality project and Joe Lancor is known for his quality work. It seems to me that it fits the site, uh, the neighborhood, and I am very pleased to support the project. I'm a longtime resident of the community, long before it was the city of Dana Point. Uh, I've spent a lot of time in my senior years writing and promoting the history of Dana Point and some of the people in, uh, important to the city. So I support this project wholeheartedly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Joe Lancor.
Commissioners, I'm the project architect and should probably wait and see if you have any questions for me when all this is done.
Great, thank you. Carol Kelly.
My name is Carol Kelly and I live on Santa Clara and I'm happy to say I'm a little sentimental about Cannons because I went there when I was twenty years old with my grandfather and it was a very elegant restaurant and I, I really enjoyed it. Um, my main concern is when the restaurant was in existence, it was closed originally on Sunday and Monday, and even now, the restaurant doesn't open until four o'clock. So there is no traffic early in the morning up till four o'clock. So with the new project going, with hotel guests and deliveries, I think that will en, will increase the traffic. So I'm very concerned about the parking. Um, I like the fact that you stated that the employees would have to park on their site, cause there's another site that's being built right next door. So if they would have some kind of, in order to be employed, they'd have to have a parking sticker like in a college, university, and that police would have to enforce that if they saw cars that didn't have that particular dec, decal, you know, then they would not be in, the hotel would be fined because their employees are using off, they're not parking where they should be parking. So that could be a, a remedy. But I'm just a little concerned about five stories, I think that is a little high, and the traffic, and, um, we, we have so many hotels going up, it would be nice if it was just a nice restaurant if they do the remodel, but that's just my feedback, thank you.
Thank you. David Pierce.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's David Pierce. Um, I've been a resident of Dana Point for sixty-three years, was born and raised here. Uh, my dad moved here in nineteen thirty, so as you can imagine, we've seen tons and tons of changes over the years from dirt roads to paved roads to, uh, my grandfather built the third house that was built in Dana Point up on Chula Vista. So I've seen the, the town grow and I've seen many changes occur, some good, some bad, but I wanted to speak to this in support of, um, the redevelopment for Cannons and the placement of a, a kind of a boutique hotel there. I think it will really enhance the area. Um, I really think that it'll be something that will bring people to the area, um, quite honestly, in, in kind of a, the bottom line thing, to bring them here, to spend their money in the harbor. I think it fits in well with the harbor redevelopment. Um, I think it fits in well with, um, the folks that we need coming here to Dana Point and enjoying what I've enjoyed my entire life. So I just wanted to speak in support of that. I think the design is fantastic, I think it's really going to enhance that area, um, and I just think it's a good idea. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Lynn McMahon. McMahon, sorry.
Thank you very much, I'm Lynn McMahon, I'm the general manager of the Blue Lantern Inn. I'm here to represent, uh, Four Sisters Inn's, which is the management company, and the owners of the Blue Lantern Inn. And I'll just read from the letter that we submitted to the committee. "We're concerned about the proposed project from several perspectives. The size and scope, the proposed one hundred room resort, hotel, restaurant, cafe, spa and parking lot would create a massive project, far exceeding what we believe appropriate for the size of the lot and the ambience of the area. The project is requesting an exemption to current height regulations, a variation in design and dimension for off-street parking and walls that exceed the height limits within setbacks. We believe that the size and scope of any building should fall within current parameters as they were drafted to keep building mass consistent with the look and feel of a charming beach city. The project would create congestion and noise in an area already plagued by traffic to the detriment of the surrounding residents and our hotel. We are surprised that the developers have not reached out to discuss their project and any proposed mitigations to the very significant impact this could have on our business." both in the short and the long term. Prior to approvals for demolition of building permit, we believe they should be required to address the following: noise abatement during construction, allowable hours, sound barriers, trucks, traffic flow, et cetera, management of debris, and the visual impact. We recognize the cliff stability has been an ongoing concern and the additional building and parking lot impact should be addressed with the utmost rigor. All of the discussions that you've had here have addressed the bluff at Cannons. When there is a rainstorm or any rain, they close the gazebo next to the Blue Lantern Inn for fear that something's going to fall down into the harbor. Has anyone addressed the adjacent bluff on which the Blue Lantern Inn is built? I would be interested to know if that's been done by any of your geologists. On an ongoing basis, the addition of a restaurant, cafe, and a hundred hotel rooms will detract from the quiet neighborhood feel of the area. Traffic will worsen, noise from patrons and staff late into the night hours. Guests of the Blue Lantern Inn and residents of the surrounding houses will be negatively impacted. Our business will suffer, property values are likely to decrease. I appreciate your diligent attention to our concerns as this process gets underway. I'm quite surprised because we have always had a good relationship with the city, that no one ever approached us or brought us into any workshops, any discussion of development of this area. This project will technically put the Blue Lantern Inn out of business during construction with earth movers and cranes and digs. I just am appalled that we were never consulted or nothing was ever discussed with us or any of the owners were ever approached, and I'm just very disappointed. And, thank you.
Thank you. Carl Iverson.
Good evening, folks. Commissioner's staff, Carl Iverson, architect, resident of Capistrano Beach. I'm here to support the project and to actually compliment the architect on the sensitivity that he has shown in the design of the project. Tough environment to work with. He has listened to the environment. It's a subtle project. The architecture is of high quality, I feel. It's going to be a real plus to the neighborhood. Actually, it's going to be a real plus to the whole town. I'd like to think that Dana Point is worthy of this project. They have overdone the parking. They have more parking than is required. They have opened some of that parking up to the public. They are going to install this trail along the bluff, open it to the public. The public has the ability to use that whole bluff now and go into the hotel. They have the ability to go all the way to the Blue Lantern Inn. So it's linking all of those projects together at this point. The issues that have come up, primarily this one about the height, the garage slopes. The garage slopes are really minor because they are well within the realm of the rules. The height, it's within the conditions. They're allowed to go ten feet above with mechanical equipment. They are less than five feet above with the mechanical equipment. And by covering it with the roof, it becomes obscured to everybody. You don't see it. Also, the maintenance factor is considerably reduced by not exposing everything to the ocean air. That's a minor issue as far as them, as far as you folks granting them that ability, I feel, but it would be a real plus. Again, I think this is a positive project. They've been four years in the process of getting here. They have gone over backwards to satisfy the city's requirements. And they're, they want to be good neighbors. I mean, they really do want to be good neighbors. They've been there for a long time. So I just encourage you to support the project. It's going to be a real positive and quality project for Dana Point in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Michael Buckingham.
Michael Buckingham, I live on Green Lantern, so I represent, like the other lady did, like somebody who actually lives around there and sees the impact. Joe, no offense to you, but we have a cumulative effect going on. I would say to the council, I just ask you to not grant any alternatives or, you know, variances either the height limit or to the, or to the street parking and what they're doing or what their parking is. Unfortunately, I missed the meeting on three-twenty-six. And to say that it's not going to change traffic is absolutely insane to say something like that. Come out and see in the morning, okay? This is a cumulative effect. You have five projects going on. And no offense to this guy, and I'm sure he'll do a great job right there. There are five projects with over four hundred units planned in here. And nobody's, nobody's taken that into consideration. If you piecemeal them one at a time, yeah, I guess they're good. It's kind of like a homeless shelter here or a drug place here. One's okay, but when we start to do five in a block, you know, and I'm not, I'm not knocking that, just frustrating. The other reason, just quite candidly, to not make exceptions, it starts a course of dealing for the other four people that say, well, he got one, can I have one? So that's why I say, no, I've got no offense to this guy. When you look at it again, the traffic, nobody's addressing it. What my friends tell me on the meeting was it was a study commissioned by, it sounded like the hotel or the, or the people, the developers, not an unbiased study right there. I wasn't there. That's the feeling in the community. You know, when you look at it specifically to the coastal commission, concerns beyond what I said is affordability, concerned about bluff access. I can tell you the other, other restaurant down the street does not give bluff access. Employee parking, you brought that up. Please walk down by the chart house and tell me how many employees park there. About two out of two hundred. There's dangerous drivers. There's going to be a restaurant. This is alcohol. There are crazy drivers already on Green Lantern. And again, I'm asking about the cumulative effects. This one, and there's a couple more restaurants coming right there. Look, you know, we've had the ex-mayor look in the corner. It's just craziness out there. Pollution, you know, you talk about the runoff. I wash people in these other restaurants, wash cars, do whatever they want to do. It sounds great with a plan, but how about your subs and things like that? And then just overall noise. And, you know, I don't want to sound like, you know, I'm against the city or anything like that, but we're not taking this, we're not taking this in that. And Joe, what I'll say to you, I look at the Blue Lantern Inn that has probably eighty percent of your footprint. They have twenty-eight units. You have a hundred units plus a restaurant and everything else. And I think this is uncalled for. We're just shoving things in. These are, some of these are just absurd and there's no concern for the sixteen residents that are on that block right there. So anyway, I'm sorry if I'm wound up and I appreciate you listening to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Buckingham. Cindy Fleming.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Cindy Fleming, thirty-three-year resident of Dana Point. Overall, I am in support of the project. The architecture, I believe, has done well. I am an architect myself. Very appropriate. I actually would support the height variance for the simple reason that those roofs covering the mechanical equipment can be seen from the trails up on the hillside across the street. And will be a much cleaner look, much, much more appropriate that way as well as, to just cut them off, I believe, would not be architecturally as pleasing. I do have a few concerns, however. One, I'm encouraged that we do have some conditions. Unfortunately, most of us have not been able to see those conditions because the exhibits were not available to us. But I want to make sure that the condition to keep employees on-site is a strong one, out of residential neighborhoods. And that there'll also be some provision for keeping restaurant patrons out of residential neighborhoods. We deal with that now. It is an ongoing problem that the city really has not addressed yet. I also have a concern about the construction activity before seven AM and deliveries before seven AM. I agree with the Blue Lantern Inn people and the people on Green Lantern that during construction, that is going to be a nightmare. With the residents directly across the street and the hotel right next door, there really needs to be some mitigation there to help both of those. That being said, with those few conditions, I would be in support of this project. I think it's a good one.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Betty Hill.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Betty Hill from Capistrano Beach. Just a couple of things. I think at some point, the city's going to have to start addressing how many hotels and how many hotel rooms are really beneficial to the city. At one of the council meetings, a hotel operator said that more hotel rooms don't always generate more income for the city. You end up having a lot of hotels not being able to meet capacity or not fill as well. A couple other things. I was hoping that the staff report, they might be able to put the photos of the project higher up on the, in the report. It's like eighty, eighty or sixty or seventy pages to try and find those pictures. So I think the residents would really maybe like to go to the staff report and just see what the project looks like. Employee parking, you discussed that and I think that was a good thing. The Dohini Hotel had a lot of problems with addressing employee parking. It's amazing how many employees are needed to service a project like this. I'm also a little bit, I'm interested in the roof treatment. In Town Center, they did some studies about what it would look, what the Town Center would look like from above. And I don't know if that was done for this project. So I'd love to know if that was even considered. And also to make sure none of, there aren't any residential areas that are impacted. And also about the glare on that roof, whether that's going to be an issue at some point. It sounds like maybe they have a treatment for that. Finally, just off the top, I'm thinking, would they be willing or will they be donating to the T-Bed? That would be nice. And would they be willing to operate a shuttle? Perhaps to take their visitors or their guests down to the harbor. So those are things that we're looking at in other parts of the city that maybe it's time to look at those issues when we approve new developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to discussion at the commission. Do we have any new questions or issues as a result of the public comments? Commissioner?
Could you walk me, walk the commission and the residents through the noise comments that were referred tonight? And then also, if there are any mitigating or mitigation measures or conditions relative to impacts to the Blue Lantern, adjacency, as well as, I don't know if our traffic engineers here or not, if they could speak to the traffic, the questions relative again to the discussion about whether or not this will have more or less the same type of traffic generation.
Yeah, so there are several conditions in the resolution, building noise. While the public hearing is going on, the engineer staff could give you some revisions to a couple of those parts of the condition, multiple product of the personal missions that we can make those, make sure that they don't interfere with the course of them. And then obviously, the condition that would be the condition. But starting with condition nine, okay, and I mentioned that one already, after you show us the certificates of usage occupancy for the building, deliveries to the site. Shall only occur between the hours of seven AM and eight AM during construction.
Eight PM.
Eight PM, sorry. During construction and then fifty, seven and fifty-eight. We do have some conditions about the construction manager. You know, construction, all construction activities modeled and maintained in good work order during, you know, construction. Construction drilling equipment shall use available noise suppression devices and properly maintain mufflers, all internal combustion engines used in the project area. The equipment that's had a lot of recommend that the manager. These are on the bigger projects where, you know, we have a lot of gradient activities. And these are pretty standard conditions that we've included in there. Included here, that's part of the conditions, fifty-seven and fifty-eight. Another one, the further restrict the high, the hours of high noise level construction activities over ninety DPA weighted, shall be limited to the hours of ten AM and four PM mornings provided. We don't typically allow construction on weekends. This is why we cover those particulars. So it doesn't allow it on weekends. And then there is, I think, we have a final one that just talks about requirement for an noise study to be part of the building, you know, to assess kind of, you know, what's happening out there. This particular project doesn't have any conference or bank facilities, so you can, this is a good idea going out. We did include another condition there that says that they were so inclined to have any type of special events, you know, as far as marketing as a wedding site, although it comes to the city first, you know, they're not all the right things that have to come to us, you know, consider all those factors, marketing and noise, anything related to those temporary uses. But at this point, that's not contemplated. We want to get off the road, so we can do this. So those are some of the conditions relative to noise.
Traffic. So there was a comment about cumulative traffic and the existing approved projects and this. I mean, you put them all together, we end up with a potential traffic issue.
If I can take that, then I don't know if Matt Conklin wants to follow up. But if you recall, the workshop, LLG, is actually the city's traffic consultant. And we use them on virtually all traffic analysis and the city relies on them to look out on behalf of the city's investors. There were no applicants that were part of that workshop and none of their consultants did any of the analysis there. If you recall, LLG did share a pretty detailed presentation relative to traffic and it was cumulative in nature. So they did look at all five projects. And, I mean, I totally get that it's very hard to comprehend that these hotels are a kind of passive use from a traffic standpoint. But if you were to actually kind of stand outside the Doubletree or the Marriott and kind of to put it a little bit in perspective, all five of these put together are about the size of the Marriott. Maybe it's slightly larger than that, but it's a decent comparison. But they just don't really generate high traffic volumes and the times are spread kind of throughout different times. There isn't necessarily a peak time, like a restaurant's peak time is seven PM if it's on foot within three days. So the cumulative analysis, what it looks at is would the traffic generated? So when I said earlier that this project would not generate any more traffic than exists today, that's just comparing Cannons to this project. They're about equal in terms of traffic generation. But yes, all five hotels would add traffic to the street. But when we look at what constitutes an impact, we look at levels of service of our streets and maintaining them at a certain level. And the additional traffic, when the analysis was done, did not put the streets at below a level service of C, which is then what we would say there's an impact if it was less than a level of C. So altogether, cumulatively, yes, there will be some additional traffic, but it doesn't constitute an impact pursuant to CWA in terms of needing to mitigate because it does fall within our policy of service level of C. Many cities will have an acceptable service level of D. At Dana Point, we decided to afford it to be a C. And then I don't know, Matt, if there was anything you wanted to add to that.
No, I'd just echo Ursula's statement that, you know, the city is evaluating and continues to evaluate. And we, I think we committed through that workshop to evaluate through the summer the conditions, you know, on Green Lantern and the surrounding areas. And as the city's traffic engineer, LLG, performed a detailed study- And as the city's traffic engineer, LLG, performed a detailed study, both against the analysis, including the Headlands Plan, including the Town Center Plan, including all of our built-out conditions, and this project still doesn't represent any increase to capacities or traffic analysis. Being an engineer, just working with numbers, so the existing, existing Cannon's Seafood Grill generates roughly a thousand trips during a weekend activity. The hotel project, hundred rooms, would generate roughly eight hundred. So it's on a magnitude of lesser during the weekend events. Thanks.
And the last was impacts, and there was a mention of cranes. What kind of construction is going to actually occur? Are we going to have erected cranes, or is it standard affair with a bulldozer and a backhoe and a lot of framing? Do you know?
They haven't indicated that. I was sort of interested in the backhoe, excavator, whatever. As far as the construction, if we don't have construction permits, you know, I don't know if we're going to need a crane. I'm not sure, obviously the lower portion is going to be concrete, but up above, I'm not sure what's the framing going to be. It's going to be wood frame above the pedestal, you know, for podiums, or if it's going to be traditional. They're doing a stucco finish on the first floor, so it's going to be something that will make the architecture a little bit, no, the commission, a little bit more on that.
Thank you.
And I just add that there are absolutely going to be construction-related impacts that are going to occur. And we're seeing it in Town Center right now, the construction of Pado West. There are certain things that the city can do. I mean, we cannot mitigate all of those. People do have a right to develop their property, and there's going to be some impacts. But for example, with Pado West, where they needed to do those long continuous pours for the concrete, initially, they, it was going to be faster, which means that the faster it takes, the less impact there is, because it's getting done quicker, so people are not having to endure this for longer periods of time. So initially, when they wanted to start at 2:00 a.m. in the morning, there were those trade-offs, and so initially, we said yes. But we got so many noise complaints because of the beeping trucks, and they were not able to do a route where they did not have to back up, that we said, no, you're not, you're not starting anymore. And we moved it to, I think, seven, 7:00 a.m. is now where it's at. So we will do things like that to do our best to make sure that people can sleep all night, and, but there will definitely be some noise during the day. And we will do the best to alleviate those concerns as much as we can within our control. But it is sort of like, do you rip off the Band-Aid, or do you make it be a really slow, prolonged process? And again, there's trade-offs with everything.
Okay. Other questions? I have one. Relative to employee parking, I see condition number twelve. What enforcement mechanism do we have to, to ensure that the employees park where they're supposed to?
Well, we do, again, we have a condition about the parking management plan, and I think we included in there that they have instructions for employees, that then they're told that they're parking on-site with no, you know, no charge. So that is one of the insurances that we could, we could provide through a condition of approval, absent, you know, limiting parking on the streets. I, you know, we have those problems throughout the city, at the Marriott, at the Ritz Carlton. I don't know, I can't say for certain if they're instructed to by each of those operators, or whether the employees, you know, do that on their own, out of the convenience. But these are the, these are, through these conditions, I think are the best way that we have to enforce that the employees that are at the uses and at the proposed structure of parking on-site, if they're made available in their condition to do that. So it's just a matter of, as the operators change, you know, making sure that they, those operators know that this is a requirement of your approval. You always have to turn over to general managers, but I, so it's just, it's just informing them and making sure that they're, they know what the conditions are.
If I may add a couple of things. One, in those other hotel circumstances, again, those all have shared parking complaints. So this hotel really is providing much more parking relative to its size than any other hotel in town, and it also has great social spaces. So that, that right there is, is going to help immensely. Two, when we met with some of the residents of Green Lantern, they had expressed concerns about the chart house, and that because the chart house is charging for valid parking, they weren't even charging their employees to park there, which is why none of their employees are parking there, and they're parking on the street. So we, since then, started doing some research into their approvals, and we, we haven't yet, we're about to, I've directed staff to go and talk to the chart house about that, and say that that's, we have to allow your employees to park on-site for free. So we do have some enforcement mechanism to go there. And then here, condition number four, says failure to abide by and faithfully comply with any and all conditions attached to the granting of this permit shall constitute grounds for revocation of said permit. So it's sometimes difficult to take some things away once it's built, like we take away their ability to build it, but we can take away some of their ability to operate efficiently. So there is some teeth there with that particular condition. And like I said, once we became aware of what the chart house was doing, we are actively going to rectify that situation. I will say, at the end of the day, public streets are public, and anyone can park in them for a period of up to seventy-two hours. That, until the city starts either striking and making it, you know, some sort of hourly parking or charging, there's not much we can do about public street parking, or there's, you know, benefit districts, preferential parking districts, and the coastal zone, those get tricky. So I want to be clear that on public streets, they are public. But we do have those other mechanisms to ensure that employees are not taking a street parking place.
Thank you. And I'm noticing that, it looks to me like, just kind of graphically, that on level P four, there's kind of really an excessive space in the center there, where if need be, they could probably do tandem parking with employees and get a few additional cars in there if they, if they wanted to do that. With that, how do we feel about this project? Anyone want to start us off?
First, I'd like to say, I took the architect's, the architect's about different graphics, so he's going to, you know, propose a, and also to the staff, one of the, I am an effort they put in to improve, like, we started off as a group. Major issues that I think we need to consider was parking. It looks like the developer has added twenty-nine additional spaces, and I think only right to park on public streets is an issue, but the parking seems to be unusable, it's being reasonably addressed. The height of the buildings, they seat in four specific points, the lowest being one foot nine, one foot nine inches, and the highest being five foot eight inches. But you can go up to ten feet if they're no sleeping, eating, or commercial use of the property, and eat. So I think that that's reasonable, and it looks to be the same exception as the Blue Lantern in this. The wall height is maximum of three and a half. The six-foot wall is required to ensure the appropriate grades and the parking structure, and support the parking level D1. Consolidating the lots seems like a reasonable issue. I don't see that. And then the stabilization of the slope will be improved with the capture of rainwater and, and very bad, and the intensity of the rainfall. So based on my assessment of those issues, I'm, I'm very, it's worth, but.
Thank you. Commissioner Opal?
I echo Commissioner Donner's comments regarding the graphics. It did make it easy to interpret all the views, and they did it from many angles. You could see what it was going to look like from Santa Clara, from Green Lantern, from the bluff top, to really give you a perspective. And then the additional graphic that Brett had put together regarding what the existing Cannon's is, so by shifting a little bit to the north, it actually opens up the harbor view a little bit. And additionally, what Mr. Iverson commented on about the architect being sensitive to the environment, I think it's a good fit for the neighborhood. I didn't think it was overwhelming. You hear five levels, you think something huge, but it was done sensitively, within the layers, within the natural bluff, so I think it was very well done. And other than my small comment about early mornings there, because I am a neighbor, and I will hear it, I am in support of it.
Vice Chair?
I also am in favor of it. I would like, though, to suggest, and perhaps they've already spoken to each other, that the developer get together with the Blue Lantern Inn, perhaps work some of those issues out. We're at the beginning of this, and I think that's the appropriate thing to do. This project, I, I think the fact that they have been able to create a beautiful style, and that fits Dana Point in their, in this project, and it's, it's still open to the public to, to be there, to, to be able to come up Cove Road, walk, walk up Cove Road, it's the best thing, and, and come and, and, and be in this wonderful place. We're very lucky here, as we all know. The, and the seven o'clock issue, I think that that's been addressed, which we all can understand, because that is a zoning code. So that's not, that shouldn't be a real problem. The, some of my concerns about the, some of the other issues, I, I, I really like that whole idea about the vegetation on the roof for the, for what the purpose is, because if you take that away, then we may be looking at a little different situation. But I think that's a good project.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, a couple, so I would certainly echo most of the comments I've heard tonight from the local commissioners. When I look at this project and I compare it to the local coastal plan, it's applies, there's an existing built structure here that's being removed. We have no ASHA, we have no view impacts. In fact, based on what I'm looking at, it's like we've got some increased views, especially from the bluff. The idea of four-sided architectural treatment to these roofs really makes, is a game changer, and certainly warrants the CUP, which is not a variance. It's a process that everybody has to go through, as well as the SDP for the site walls. I think that's an appropriate measure, given the topography of the site. It's certainly visually compatible with the neighborhood. I would, almost Polynesian style architecture with the neo-Polynesian style. I think it looks amazing. The idea of grass roofs and that sister, and to deal with the water quality issues and the potential erosion, you know, shows what can be done when you take nineteen-sixties, nineteen-seventies sites, and you bring them into the 21st century. It's a completely different result, and it's a good one for not only the stability of the hillside, but also for the project. As it relates to traffic, I did my own studies, and I came up with about the same number that staff did, or that it was a wash, when you look at either the peak traffic times or the average daily trips. And so I'm not necessarily concerned about that. I am, and I would suggest that the applicant meet with the neighbor, the Blue Lantern Inn, for the simple reason that there's going to be a time and a place when they're going to want to develop or redevelop, and they should have a good relationship since they're neighbors. It's a neighborly thing to do. I don't know what happened in this case, but it sounds like they did a great job throughout this process. We missed that on that. That's not something that we weigh into our decision tonight. So for those reasons, I'm in full support of the project.
Thank you. I too am in support of the project. I think it looks phenomenal. When I looked at the renderings and, and looked at the site, and the more I thought about it, I thought, this, this is really phenomenal, given the topography and the location and the challenges of the site. I'm supportive of the CUP relative to the height issue. And I think that the, the exhibits well illustrate the relatively small encroachments of the height into the envelope, or above the envelope, that it's seeking to cover the mechanical equipment. So I'm supportive of that. I'm supportive of the SDP for the, for the two and a half foot wall extension in a limited location where it is. I'll be, I would love to make a motion on this project.
Before we make a motion, can I get first to read revised condition forty-one, which had to do with the 7:00 a.m. time period?
Actually, there's two conditions, revisions, engineering board. So on condition thirty-nine, what I spoke about, there, we talked about earlier, it's our times, sentence, beginning of further construction, contractor show require that construction workers arrive at, and depart from the project site during off-peak hours, i.e. arrive prior to 7:00 a.m. and depart prior to 4:00 a.m. or after 6:00 a.m. That sentence would be removed. And then on, on condition number forty-one, that sentence would be, construction calling period prior to issuance of any demolition, grading, or other construction permits, the approved, or the project applicant shall provide, the city, to the city's director of public works, city engineer, plan stating, colon, the project construction contractor shall take all measures required, including but not limited to use of a construction street sweeper to ensure that all routes are clean and free of debris at all times. In the event that all operations cause damage to existing vacant streets, curb, or others, the applicant shall be responsible for the repair, and shall complete subject repairs to the satisfaction of the city engineer within seven days of damages. And removing a sentence with the earlier start times. And then we would ask that the commission that we can look at the condition number forty-two.
And, sorry, one more. Condition number nine, the very last sentence, it was incomplete sentence, and I would propose just to delete that fragment unless the party disagrees.
Okay, we're good? I move that we approve coastal development permit, CDP sixteen dash zero zero five, to demolish an existing restaurant and construct a new hundred-room resort hotel with a restaurant, cafe, spa, and associated parking. Conditional use permit, CUP eighteen dash zero 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 eight, for alternatives to the design of off-street parking regulations and for architectural features to exceed the district building height limit, and site development permit, SDP eighteen dash zero zero one six, for walls to exceed the three-point-five-foot height limit within setbacks adjoining public streets, with tentative track map, TTM eighteen one six four, to consolidate the underlying legal lots at three four three four four Green Lantern, with the conditions as proposed to be changed by staff and as discussed.
A second?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a clarification?
Yeah, sure. We'll see how, how it goes. We just voted to approve your project.
A number of comments came about liking the architecture or liking the design, and half of those should go to Ursula.
Thank you for coming and voicing your opinion on the project. Moving on, item E, old business. There's no old business. Item F, new business. There's no, no new business. Staff reports? Staff reports?
Yes, I'd like to remind the commission that the, uh, next meeting is a, uh, we're not that sorry.
Uh, hang on. If, if, if the public could please take their conversations outside, that'd be great.
Yeah, hopefully we'll, we'll get our attorneys and we'll see what's going on. In addition, I wanted to let the commission know that, um, the next meeting will happen over the door. Um, and, uh, that is where you will call me, uh, the chair, vice chair.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Opel?
I don't have anything, Jim.
Commissioner Donner? Yes? Vice Chair Murphy?
Uh, yes, I, I had a wonderful time at the art fair yesterday. Uh, I don't know if any of you were at the art fair yesterday, uh, in Del Prado. It was perfect weather and there were so many people with different kinds of beautiful pieces of artwork of all various jewelry and photos and pictures and great music was playing and people were seemingly having a very, very good time. So we, we thank the city for that. And, and the, the art fair, or the art commissioners.
Yeah, I will actually clarify that. The city, um, I mean, assisted a little tiny bit, but that's really been led and driven by, um, some of the art commissioners and the merchants. So they're really taking that event off and it's great.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, so I would, uh, I, uh, I guess I'm admitting that I eat a lot of junk food. But if you've been over to the Row lately, they've added two new restaurants. They added a pizza place, uh, which is really good if you like thin pizza. And then they opened a donut and, uh, chicken place, I guess, donut, coffee, and chicken. I don't know about the chicken, but the donuts were really good. I don't mind the other stuff, but if you haven't gotten over there, it's, uh, worth taking a look at.
Are you saying that pizza parallel is unparalleled?
That's pretty good.
Um, I agree with the architects. I presume that the, I mean, the architecture on the project really looks phenomenal. And I presume it was through continuous prodding on the part of staff to get them to tweak and tweak and improve and improve and improve. But I thought it looked fantastic. So congratulations to both of you.
I would like to, um, well, there's a, a firm that we actually use to help us do that. So, you know, the city does not have a design review board, but we do have the ability at staff level to work on those things. And, um, we have a firm called SDFM Design Studio that we use on, um, you know, larger scale projects that they are an architecture firm and, um, they've been really fantastic. Um, they communicate in a really clear way that the applicants get. And, um, it was, if you would have seen the original to where we got, it, it was great. But the applicant was very willing to, to go along, which was, it happened.
Actually, that would, you kind of bring up a point, a thought I had, which is we don't have a design review board, but yet we get great architecture. And so that's really a testament to, to you guys to drive that and, and ensure that we get what we want. So thank you so much for doing that. Um, just, you know, summer's here, the trolley's going, everything, weather's unbelievable, the waves are up, that's all great. Um, but I'm going to have to change one of the conditions I usually see, which says, "Subject to approval by the community development director." So now I'm just going to have to change that to say, "Subject to approval by Ursula Luna Reynosa, wherever she may be." So we'll still be seeking your, your stuff in the future. So we're going to be sorry to see you. So go with that. Um, this says here adjourn, adjourning to six PM. The, it's just a workshop at four, that's not technically a planning commission?
Correct, it's a workshop. You're not taking action, you're just providing feedback and we're going to be starting.
Okay, so with that, I'll adjourn, um, this meeting to the next regular meeting of the planning commission to be held on Monday, June twenty-fifth at six PM. Thank you.